The United States of America and to the Republic where much is hands, one nation under guard, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Donovan?
Present.
Counselor Rowan?
Here.
Counselor Foley?
Here.
Counselor Sinclair?
Here.
Counselor Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Chiazo?
Here.
Chairman Bayby?
Here. And are there any general public comments that anyone would like to get up and speak about? And this should be about any item or issue that is not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes, and if you could state your name and address, please.
Don't start the timer before I start speaking, please.
Oh, for God's sake.
It's extremely rude when you do that.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak while the gentleman gets prepared?
Gentleman's prepared right now. I'm going to be reading from my book tonight, Chapter Two, lines 12 through 22, covering a drug arrest that went extremely sideways. A young female hotel clerk named Crystal Sandstrom placed a call to the Scarborough Police Department headquarters on Route One. She thought a guest was a drug dealer. Very soon after that, Officer Josh Gueye, who is no longer with the police department here, was on the scene at the hotel. We were after many meetings with the young desk clerk and much surveillance of the subject. A romance blossomed between Ms. Sandstrom and the married Officer Gueye. The desk clerk became pregnant, Officer Gueye divorced his wife, and married the mother of his child. All while, the sources tell us that the desk clerk slash cop girlfriend slash cop wife slash confidential informant to the Scarborough Police Department was helping the Scarborough Police to build a case against Bobby Collins, age 32. Later, the Scarborough Police Department made a traffic stop and developed a drug case against Collins. He was sentenced to time served, waiting for his trial date. According to the Scarborough Police Department's website, Collins was arrested for three Class A felonies, each carrying a 20-year sentence. How does a potential 60-year sentence get plea logging down to five and a half months? Waiting for the trial to come to the top of the docket, easy. Scarborough Police had ruined the case with Officer Gueye having a baby with the key witness, the confidential informant. Had Bobby Collins' defense lawyer, Robert LaBrassiera, asked, "Well, given these facts, it's likely the client would have avoided the entire arrest indictment and jail time." Perhaps Collins should consider suing every member of the Scarborough Police Department that had any knowledge of this. And the discovery was withheld from the attorney all this time, and likely, the entire case would have died before it ever got to the indictment. Now, everybody in the command structure knew this was going on, including Chief Moulton. Moulton, to cover up this misconduct, promoted Gueye to acting sergeant. And then, a few weeks later, he was taken to a federal law enforcement awards luncheon, and here's the copy of the email that I got through a freedom of access request, and was given a plaque for a job well done. Ruining a triple Class A felony arrest, getting the witness pregnant, divorcing his wife, and marrying the woman. A job well done and a plaque saying you did a good job. This is your command structure in Scarborough. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Good evening. Larry Hartwell, Nine Puritan Drive. Last week, you passed on the second reading the temporary sign ordinance. I attended all four meetings of the council, the ordinance, and the planning committee. On the first two meetings, I spoke and had some suggestions on changes in it. They were changed at the ordinance committee meeting and presented last week. Specifically, the 50 feet were going to 30 feet. The tenth of a mile is being changed to 30 feet. During the meeting last week, the changes, the written procedures or ordinance was just passed out at the time of the vote. I didn't read it. I don't see as of 5:00 tonight, but it's on the town website. What I did find, or what someone sent to me, was that this got attached to it. There's a drawing at the end, a schematic that didn't exist in any of the preceding meetings. And in it, we have the, every major intersection, basically, on Route One and on Payne Road has a turning lane, a left, a right turning lane. And so, the diagram says, oh, it's not 30 feet from the corner. You have to go all the way back to the beginning of the turn lane and then measure 30 feet. So effectively, the first sign, the sign on the corner, is going to be 150 feet or further back. That was not, as far as I know, discussed anywhere. I don't know that anyone on the council was aware of that. That's, that's not good. It really, really changes the whole intent of going from 50 feet to 30 feet to say every, every corner with these intersections. And like I say, I'm not aware of any discussions at the ordinance committee or at any other place. The other part about the, the sign on it, since you passed it last, at the last meeting, just driving around town, you can't go by a major intersection without seeing signs. I've yet to see one that has the appropriate wording on it. And most of them also don't fit the requirements as far as the distance is concerned. I think we're going to have a real problem trying to, to bring compliance with this. I mean, we're going to have to send someone out, at least on a weekly basis, to identify every sign, when it was put up, and then try to make contact with people that don't have the proper information on it. We have a lot of businesses, national businesses, they have thousands of outlets. They're not going to make up a special sign for Scarborough when they have a sale on. So, I think we really need to take another look at the whole sign ordinance, because if it's not enforceable, what's the sense? And people do want to comply. When I've got up here and supported it, I was supporting it from the standpoint of political signs. And in that context, it looks fine until I got this started.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwell.
I'm Susan Hammel, Bay Street in Pine Point. And I'm up here tonight because I'd like to try to clarify some comments that I have made to the council at some prior meetings. First, I want to thank all of you for your service to the town. You put in more hours and more energy into, into doing what you do than any of us could ever know. And I really appreciate it, and I thank you for it. We all have the same goal, to make Scarborough the very best that we can. We simply sometimes disagree on how we're going to get there. And that's just a fact of life. But I have said in the past, when I've up here, when I've been up here, that it feels like sometimes the council isn't listening. And what I really meant was that, there are two members of this council, two, and I'm not going to name them, who are not listening. And I appreciate that the council has, other members do listen and have made extreme efforts to reach out to the public and, and get public input. These two individuals, I'm sure you know who you are, and basically have said that I was elected to do a job, and that the public puts its trust in me, and I will make up my own mind in my own way. And that public input is almost irrelevant. And I'm sorry about that, but I especially want to apologize to all the other councilors when I have been up here and I've said the council isn't listening, because I know that's really not true. There are five people who are listening, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other comments?
Larry Hartwell, Nine Puritan Drive. Will there be a public comment on the tax abatement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not seen any. We'll close the public comment section. Moving on to item number five is the minutes to accept the September 6, 2017 regular meeting. There are motion. They're moved. Any, thank you. Any edits, modifications, or changes for the clerk? Not seeing any. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. There are no adjustments to tonight's agenda. I have already signed the treasurer's warrants. Order number 17-075 is a 7:00 p.m. public hearing on the proposed amendment to the second contract zoning agreement between the town of Scarborough and Robert Jettis and Lucinda Malbone, as presented by the planning board. Is there, I'd like to open it up to a public hearing. Is there any comments? Not seeing any. I believe this will go to a second reading on October 4. Moving on to order number 17-085 is a 7:00 p.m. public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 1301, the General Assistance Ordinance pursuant to Title 22, MRS-A43054, regarding general assistance. Is there any public comment? I'll open up the public hearing. Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion? They're moved. Second. Any questions for staff regarding this? Not seeing any. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to order number 17-086 is a 7:00 p.m. public hearing on the proposed amendments of Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance, Section, I'm horrible with Roman numerals. Is that six? Six. Definitions in Section 17, 18, sorry. B, Higginson Parkway District, as presented by Sedco. Is there any, sorry, I was debating whether to invite Ms. Martin up if there needed to be. Well, we'll open it up to a public hearing first. Is there any public comments? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Actually, this is just a public hearing, correct? And this will also be on the October 4 agenda. Moving on to order number 17-087, it's a 7:00 p.m. public hearing on the proposed amendments to the town of Scarborough's official zoning map to rezone the parcel located in the Enterprise Business Park identified as map U39, Lot 4701, as shown on the town assessor's map from the General Business District B3 to the Higginson Parkway District HP. And I have a feeling I just butchered that name. Again, I can hear Judy Roy telling me how to pronounce it properly. Let's apologize for that. Is there any public comments regarding the change? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing, and this will also be on the October 4 agenda. Moving on to order number 17-088 is a 7:00 p.m. public hearing and second reading to repeal Chapter 308, Town of Scarborough's ordinance regulating political signs in the public right of way. Is there any public comment for the public hearing?
I've given some thought to this since the meeting two weeks ago. There's a number of companies, like real estate companies, that have three and four signs on one street selling houses. Are they going to be required to have a tenth of a mile between house for sale signs on a street when the houses are under a tenth of a mile apart? This law, or this proposed rule, whatever you want to call it, violates the content rulings on the Supreme Court in three huge decisions. The state of Maine might have a law saying you can do this, but I would remind you of a law in the South called Brown versus Board of Education. That was overturned by the Supreme Court also. I don't know why you guys are spending money to have Drummond and Woodson draw up something that you can't defend in court. You can't have content-based discrimination. You have to have equal protection of the law, the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution. You can't say a political sign doesn't have the same protection as a real estate sign, or a sign selling hamburgers. You can't single out one particular thing, like political free speech, and regulate it the way you want to regulate it. I don't know what you've spent for legal fees from Drummond and Woodson. I will be following a freedom of access to find out what amount of money has been spent on this foolishness, because it's not defendable. And I would recommend that you do away with this proposed ordinance immediately. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion from the council?
Second.
Any questions or comments regarding the proposal? Though, would you like to give a recap on what this does so that people understand, because the comments were a little confusing for the public?
This is 17-088?
Yes.
As a part of the sign ordinance, we had to make the ordinances, all of the ordinances, content neutral as they dealt with signs. We have a sign ordinance. We revamped it in its entirety to make it content neutral. There was also another ordinance, the political, which section is that? The...
Chapter 308.
Chapter 308, political signs, which was not content neutral. It is now superseded by the ordinance that we passed, and so, this ordinance needs to be repealed. Pretty straightforward. It's, it would not withstand a constitutional challenge. We realize that all along, and this is just a tag-along part of wrapping up the, the sign work that we've been doing.
Thank you. Counselor Rowan, did you have a comment?
Oh, no. I think that covers it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Not seeing any. Moving to question. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to order number 17-093 is a public hearing in action on the request for a food handler's license from Suzie Snowflake Edibles, doing business as Beal Famous Ice Cream, located at 29 Gorm Road. Also, Van Rio, doing business as Pizza Time Demetrius, located at 185 US Route One. And Carrie Munson, doing business as Pleasant Hill Cafe, located at 132 Pleasant Hill Road. Is there any public comment? I'll open up the public hearing. No, I'm seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion from council? They're moved.
Second.
Any questions for the clerk regarding the licenses? Counselor Chiazo?
Just, just one question. It was brought to my attention, not necessarily anybody on this particular list, but if, if a business is not in good graces with their property taxes, or they're later and they're on some kind of payment plan, that is grounds for refusal of a food handler's license, correct?
That's correct. They have to bring it up, bring the payment up current. Yes.
Okay. And that is reviewed even on, not just for new applications, but for renewals as well?
That's correct. Even on liquor licenses, we also do that, too.
Okay. Thank you.
So, as a follow-up question, are the applicants that are asking for this food handler's license up to date with their taxes or in a payment arrangement that's acceptable to the town?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Moving to question. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to order number 17-094, it's a 7:00 p.m. public hearing in action on the renewal request for junkyard permits pursuant to Title 30A, MRS-A, Chapter 183, Goldstein Steel Company, Inc., located at 36 Running Hill Road, A. Gagnon or E. Perry, is that or, or should it be and? No, wait, God, A. Gagnon or E. Perry Iron and Metal, located at Rigby Road, Scarborough Auto Parts, located at 40 Holmes Road, and Speedway Auto, located at 343 Payne Road, as presented by the clerk. Opening up for public comments in the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion from council? They're moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments for staff? Not seeing any. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Onto old business. Order number 17-015 is a second reading on the six-month moratorium on retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs. I'd actually like to ask the chair of the ordinance committee to give us an overview, and then I'll open it up to public comments so that people...
Certainly. This has been before the council before. This is the second reading. We had a public hearing on the moratorium also. What we're essentially doing is establishing a six-month period where we will not be accepting any applications for retail establishments or social clubs. And that will give the state enough time to finish its work, and we will then follow directly upon the state's completion of its work to adopt an ordinance that would deal with all aspects of the marijuana issue.
Thank you. With that, is there any comments from the public? Not seeing any. Is there a motion from council? They're moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions for council, or for staff even? Not seeing any. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Order number 17-080 is an act to create an ad hoc budget advisory committee that was tabled from the August 16, 2017 town council meeting. With that, is there anybody that would like to speak on this item from the public? Not seeing any. We'll close the public comment. Is there a motion from council?
They're moved.
Second.
And comments and questions? Counselor Foley?
So, this was obviously something that I had put out there and also tabled to such a time when we could reconvene or convene a meeting with both the school board and the council. And kind of at the direction and suggestion of the chair, I've been kind of, I have not personally reached out to try to see when or how that should happen, and been kind of waiting to hear. So, as far as, it's, it's a concept I'm still very much in supportive and passionate about. I think, you know, three failed referendums, no matter which side of the vote you were on, says to me that we need to do something more to get more people involved in a variety, in new ways. And so, I'm wide open to, again, talking about, you know, changing the composition or the, the structure of how we go about doing that, and I'd love to hear other ideas. So, I would, again, propose we table, I haven't heard from the chair, maybe you have some comments about, or an update for us on where those conversations have gone.
Sure. So, I'm going to give a very brief update on it, as far as my role in this, and maybe have Counselor Hayes talk a little bit more as finance chair, because it was brought up as part of a discussion with individual members of the finance committees, not necessarily the entire board. So, if you're comfortable doing that, or I can talk about, too. But if you, I'd rather have you do. As chair, I did reach out to the chair of the school board, as well as talked with the chair of their finance committee. As you can imagine, especially with the start of school, their schedule is extremely crowded, just as ours is, too. So, trying to find a time before today was very difficult and could not happen. That's why at the last meeting, I did kind of, I think I suggested that maybe the finance committees take this issue up as part of the joint. And we've had some conversations. I know I have at least one-on-one with a couple of them. But that's really all, that's all I've been able to get done in the two weeks or three weeks that it's been. So, I apologize that there isn't more definitive. It's just getting everyone, they have as many committees as we do. But Counselor Hayes, did you want to add anything from the, from this committee?
Well, not much more to add. We did have a finance committee meeting, joint finance committee meeting this week, Monday night. And at the end, I'll kind of summarize some of the things we did talk about. We talked about a variety of subjects about the budget process and where we are. We really didn't come to conclusion on this particular item. So, I would suggest that we table this again until we're able to get to, come together and have that discussion. I think it's a discussion for us whether, and I don't think we, we did float the concept, is this a full council, Board of Education discussion or finance committee? And I don't think we really concluded in one way or the other. So, I think it's still an open item. So, I would recommend that we table this to a future date.
Counselor, any other comments or questions? Counselor Sinclair?
Katie, I'd, I'd be happy, as the chair of communications, to sit down with you and maybe work through fine-tuning your proposal and work out, maybe work out some of the kinks, maybe talk to some of the people from the round tables that we've talked to, get some feedback from them, and then come back to the council with a proposal. I'd be happy to join you and maybe help move the process along a little bit, if that's the direction that you're willing to go in.
Other comments or questions? Want to be shared? So, just, I'm glad that we're tabling it, because it, one, it's very important, and we need to do it right. Because one of the, one of the concepts that we were talking about at the joint finance committee meeting is, you know, we have a process that isn't exactly perfect. It's working, but it's not perfect, and we want to make that more perfect. And so, creating additional processes to accompany an imperfect process already adds complications and can add, I don't want to say conflict, it can, it can be emotional in the process. So, you know, I think that it's nice, and the recommendation to push this further back is actually well thought out. I will say personally, I actually am the only one, probably the only one left in Scarborough, because I don't remember who else was on the darn committee. We actually did this once before, and it was in 1999 when I first ran for the school board. And the school board itself had an ad hoc advisory committee meeting. And there, I want to say there must have been 25 people that were selected from the community that was part of that. And it turned into a political, more of a political show than it was a F, more than it was a, a process in which we accomplished something. And that's because of the way that it was formed, why it was formed. It was a very different environment in the sense that people that had been elected had been very, to the school board was a very outspoken former editor of a local paper, and all kinds of conflict that came out of it. And so, I want to do it right, and I don't believe that this type of structure is the right approach. So, I hope that when you do take into consideration what we want to move forward, I would rather see this be a task force that reports directly into both managers so that they can, because they're the ones that have to implement the recommendations. If this truly is about efficiencies and effectiveness and about programs and things in that nature, then I want them to be the managers or the controllers of this process so that it's useful for them and that they can implement that. So, if you could take that into consideration as you're crafting it, I just, I think it needs to be out of the political realm and that it reports directly into the staff that's going to implement it, so that they can control it. So, if you would take that into consideration, if this does move forward, then I would appreciate it. But it sounds like it might be tabled this evening, and we'll bring it up later. Any other comments, Counselor Darin?
Yeah, I, I like the idea that the finance committee will take this up. I think the joint finance committee meetings really ought to be a collaborative, collaborative effort that would allow a determination as to where, if any flaws, there are in the process, and what the best way to respond to it. This is one idea. But I'd first like to understand where the six people on the joint finance committees of the town and the school believe there are deficiencies, and then express what those are, and, and what are the best ways to solve them. Right now, I think the process is incredibly transparent and open, and we have sessions repeatedly to give people the opportunity. And the materials that are, are prepared for the budget are so extensive, it's, it's remarkable. And so, I'm kind of looking and saying, what's the problem? Is it that a special interest group feels that they'd like to have more involvement? Well, okay. But I'm not sure that's, that would not be the basis for getting me to vote for this proposal.
Counselor Foley?
So, I just want to reiterate, and I don't want to belabor it this evening, because we're not having the full discussion, but really, the intent behind it is not about, for me, anyway, is not as much about looking back at this year and the process and nitpicking and saying, we did this wrong, we did that wrong. and saying, we did this wrong, we did that wrong. It's really about bringing a wider group of people together who we could create what I would call local champions, so that, you know, and again, whatever that composition is, it's different. But then, the more information they have, the more information they get comfortable with, and the facts that we help provide to them, then the story that we want supported in the public eye has a better chance of going. And I think the ultimate goal is really getting back to a place where we can pass the budget the first time around, because people believe in it, and I don't think that's, you know, where we were this year. So, that's really my intent. It's not about nitpicking pieces apart and saying, we did anything wrong. I'm not, I don't believe that, it's about moving forward. So, but I am, and I do like Counselor Sinclair's suggestion, and then maybe that's something we even do in conjunction with, if the Joint Finance Committee wants to put this on their agenda and have that discussion, of course, they can do that. If the Communications Committee wants to host a roundtable specific to this topic and talk to, you know, get public input on what would a committee like this look like, then that would be an opportunity for them. And then we could take, you know, the discussion from both of those places and meld, you know, what we think is kind of the best suggestion. So, I'm wide open to all of that, and I love more conversation, so, but I am happy to table it for this evening.
Counsel Kiazos?
Yeah, I'm not going to belabor the point, because it's not really debating, I'm glad we're going to table it. I was pretty clear with what my concerns were with the initial proposal. Nothing's really changed since then, none of the wording's changed since then. One of my biggest hiccups is how is the composition of the committee? I thought it was fairly clear that there's, really isn't a precedent for something like that. Doesn't mean that we can't, I just want to see a clear criteria and understanding of how someone or a group or an individual is going to be chosen to be put on that board, and I'd like it to be open to pretty much anybody, because if we start excluding and including, I think that just divides different camps and different groups. So, my suggestion, I appreciate Counselor Sinclair's offer to, to support you and get that wording in line, and I certainly would be available to address any concerns I might have, and I will wait and see what you guys come up with, with a proposal before I move forward, but I'm glad we're going to table it. Certainly, the composition was a very important aspect from my perspective.
Counsel Hayes?
Yeah, I think I just wanted to kind of address Counsel Donovan's comments. We had a pretty full discussion on our joint, we hadn't met in a while, so we had kind of a far-ranging conversation on a variety of things. We really talked about the budget process, what may have worked, what didn't work, things we could do. We had a pretty lengthy conversation about forecasting, and does that make sense or not make sense? We really didn't get into this particular topic. We did float it, and we said there's, you know, what would, what would we want to do? Is this a finance committee, Joint Finance Committee function, or a full board? And I don't think we really got a clear answer to that, so it needs to be a work in progress. I think, as Sean would suggest, I think we need to check back with the Board of Education and figure out how they'd like to approach it too, but that's, we did continue, and I was jumping ahead, I was going to report out, but a positive sign is we did talk about a lot of, we decided as a group that we're going to continue to meet year-round, so we're going to continue the process, and really actually start some of the budget work now. I mean, some of the conversations we're already going to start is, okay, what does next year look like? What are some of the drivers, what are some of the things? So, let us kind of go through that process, and then we will report back about a process to move forward on this proposal, if that makes sense.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the clarification. Anybody, Counsel Sinclair?
Yeah, I just want to, the one thing that trips me up a little bit with it going in the direction of the finance committee into, in that direction, is that if it goes towards the Communications Committee and we can do a polling or a roundtable, then we're sort of, then we're answering that need from the community of, we need more input, we want more input, we want to give more input. So, I feel like that way we can address that piece of it, whereas I feel as though, I get a little concerned if it sits with the finance committee, they've got so much on their plate that they don't have as much time to sort of sit around a roundtable with, with community members. That's my only, my only issue with it. The good part about it, and my hope would be that someone from that committee would be involved with the, maybe the forming or the wording of this, is that they do have the experience and the knowledge that we don't have from our group. Does that make sense? So, I would definitely want to see some input from them. We've got a, we, one of the biggest concerns that we got, I think, from our sessions that we've had, is that people are really asking us to have more conversations at this level with the, with us, the seven of us. They want to hear us discussing these things more openly, so that's why I'm glad that we're having this discussion tonight, and we're sort of fielding this between all of us, because even though we may know in our minds, oh, I know, I know that, you know, Counsel Donovan feels this way, so that's good, I know we're good, you know, well, the public doesn't know that. I'm just using that as an example. But, and so, one of their concerns was, they want to hear that, you know, they want to hear us talk more, whereas I've always sort of been of the mind frame of like, I talk too much, and people probably are like, stop, somebody stop her. We really got the opposite feedback, and, you know, these guys, these guys were all there, so please, you know, jump, correct me if I'm wrong, but we really got the opposite of that, where people really want to know where we stand, and they want to know why we stand where we stand. So, going back to the original proposal that's on the table, I agree with the concept of it, mostly because I've seen how much good I think the roundtables have created, and I know how much feedback, positive feedback, we've gotten from them. So, for me, this feels like a branch of that, and I feel like any time that we can include the public in a positive setting, that moves forward and doesn't look back, like you said, because what we don't want to ever create is an environment where we're sitting around a table and we're bashing things that, that went wrong. That's completely unspective, and that's one thing we've never had, which has been, we've been, I think we've been really lucky. So, my, my point is, I kind of wanted to address a little bit of why I felt like it might not be, the finance committee might not be the best place for this to go to. I'd like to see it in front of the, either in front of the Communications Committee, or have a couple of us form something where we sit down and hash some of these things out, and then we bring a proposal back to the council as a whole. That's just my opinion.
Counsel Kiazos?
So, I, and I, I understand where you're coming from, and I think, I don't think it has to be an either-or situation, I think we could do parallel things. I think you certainly, as Communications, we rely on that group to poll the community and, and not just communicate individual ideas, but to communicate the, the images and the, and the issues that are coming out from the council as a whole. So, I think we could do both. My challenge with putting it in, in one committee or the other, is the budget's probably one of the most complex and, and drawn-out processes that we do as a council. We rely on a lot of expertise, and I do think that, well, I don't think necessarily the finance committee should be responsible for organizing this council or this committee and structuring it. You do have the benefit of having the Chair of Finance on Communications, so that's, that's a positive thing. I see us kind of as doing parallel work, and then coming together collectively as a body and deciding what we want the makeup to be, how we want, what outcomes do we expect, and then, you know, that will kind of, I think, drive the type of, of people that we want, and what, whether we want experts, do we want citizen involvement, what combination of all those things. I mean, I think it's like any other committee. I think we can work collectively in our individual groups to establish what that need's going to be, and then we come together collectively, determine what that is at the council, then we can construct a committee that, that meets those needs, I think. So, I think it can be done parallel. From a procedural standpoint, I think if we table this, we have to put a date that we're going to take it back up again. I might suggest that the motion be withdrawn, so that we can do some preliminary work first, and we're not trying to get to a date, because we've got a lot of other things coming too. I'm not saying that we put it away for good, but I think what's going to come out of the communications and this, this discussion is going to be somewhat different than what's in front of us. So, I just might suggest from a procedural standpoint, we withdraw this motion. It can come back at a later date, but I think if we table, we have to put a date to it.
Yeah, we do.
So, just a thought.
Counsel Foley?
So, I thank everyone for the discussion, it's, this is, I think, really good and healthy, as Kate kind of was saying, and is exactly the kind of discussion that we've been hearing people want more of. I want to keep it kind of live if we can, and I'm happy even if we went out three meetings, but I, my fear is if we take it off, then it's really easy to let it go away. So, we can look at the calendar and give ourselves some time. The other thing that I think is really key, and what was remiss in my first pass and throwing it out there relatively quickly, was, you know, not engaging with some of the Board of Education members directly. So, I also want to, whether we're having one-on-one conversations over coffee about their thoughts and feelings, whether it's a, you know, conversation with the superintendent, those, I think those things, that input for me, so my preference was out, was to have, that's why I wanted to have a full combined workshop, understanding the logistics of trying to plan that is a bit of, been a bit of a nightmare, and yeah, I think someone's been at a meeting every single night for the past, like, hundred and twenty days. So, I get that, and I'm happy to give us, to give this the time that it needs, so that's where, that's where I kind of am, so.
Counsel Rowan?
I did, and just, just listening to the conversation, I, I really appreciated the desire to get everybody involved with the, with the joint workshop, because I think there, those of us that aren't on neither finance nor the communications also have strong feelings about how we could move the process forward, so I'd love to be included in those conversations. I'm happy to do it with, if we can do that without creating illegal meetings.
Counsel Sinclair?
The only, the only thing I, and Katie just briefly touched on it, but the one thing after Counselor Kiazos' comments, the one thing I wanted, I would not, I would like to see happen at least tonight, is to make sure that we're designating at least someone, whether that's the Chair, or it's Katie, or whoever it is, but I would like to see someone designated to be the person who will be in touch with the school board. To whatever extent that is, that can be decided at a later time, but I think it's important that we make sure that if we're not going to be able to get a joint workshop with them, which is completely understandable, I don't want to see that, that opportunity missed. And I want to make sure, I mean, they also have a communications group that is very active, and, you know, maybe that's us meeting with just their communications group, but I would like to make sure that they are kept up to date as, as the process goes, because I'd hate to see us going down a road and we start working really heavily on something and they're, they go, whoa, wait a minute, we can't do that, and we didn't realize that we couldn't do that. So, I'd like to see just, I know that, I know that Chairman Baybine is the liaison to them, and I know that I'm his backup, but just kind of maybe see how everyone else feels on how maybe that, what direction we should go in that regards to that.
Counsel Hayes was next.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just kind of responding to Counsel, what I'd like to be able to do, and I think I'm picking up on Counsel Foley, I would like to at least put this back on our agenda sometime before the elections, because as we look at this, there, there could be quite a bit of turnover in sort of the people that have been involved in the process this year, so it would really be good to get everybody who was involved in the process this year at the table to have a conversation. So, I would suggest trying to bring this back sometime, you know, in our second meeting in October or something, just so we can touch base, and hopefully, and I find if you have a date certain on something, it does kind of put pressure on to at least have conversations and do some things.
Counsel Kiazos?
So, it, to respond to Counselor Sinclair's comments, one of the things that we brought up several meetings ago now, I think, was the fact that at the Joint Finance Committee meetings, is it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily need to be joint finance. We are doing similar things with communications, so maybe this is the opportunity for the communications group to establish those interactions and relationships with the schools' communication committee, because it is a different makeup than is on finance as well. So, I would certainly encourage that to happen, even if not just centered around this issue. Any excuse to, I think, kind of get together and, and talk about issues certainly helps. So, I think, I think that's, that's an approach that could be, could be worked out, and probably might be a good catalyst to start that in motion. I think the, the thought with joint finance is, we have been doing it for a while, and we have some, I don't want to say the relationship's already established, but we've got a pretty functioning, high-functioning working group together, and, and we could have those conversations, I think, not saying that you couldn't. So, I would actually support you, you know, reaching out and having a joint communications committee meeting, and I'm sure that they would, I, well, I can't speak honestly for the, for the, for the school board, but I think that would be something they seem to be receptive to as well.
Counsel Rowan?
I think the other thing I really liked about having the, a joint discussion about it, was just so they could be out in public rather than, you know, because there's, we want to make sure that we're bringing the public along, whatever's being discussed. So, but I, I think that a joint communication meeting would certainly achieve that.
And, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Sean. Well, we could also, for our next communication meeting, because we haven't scheduled it yet, we could actually talk to the school board's communications group and possibly invite them to be a guest at our meeting, and that would allow any council members to also, Chris has actually joined our communication meeting before, and we've liked, I'm not sure if he spoke, but we made eye contact a couple times, like, we think this is okay, you know, so...
It's going to be Nacho, that's the challenge, Nacho.
So, because the forum is, is a little bit different than, you know, the finance forum and things like that, it might be a more open setting for us to have sort of more of a dialogue, and when we set that date, I'll just make sure we send it to all of the council members, but I will check with their, their communications group, as long as this is an okay plan for everyone here, Katie especially, since this is your, I don't, I don't, not taking this over at all, obviously, you're on communications, so, but I think it would give them a great opportunity to join us in that meeting, and maybe we could hash out a couple things and see what level their involvement is, plus it will also give them a couple weeks for them to check in with their group to get maybe their consent, their group consensus. So, I'll make sure that we, that Katie and I work on that, and as long as that's the direction that you all see, if you all think that's the best way to go.
Sounds great.
So, I would, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I would support this concept of a joint communications setting where the school board and the town communications committee takes the initiative to try to discuss between themselves, where, where are the shortcomings, what are we trying to achieve with this, what are the options for moving forward? I'm sure you'll probably find other members of the town council and the school board would attend those sessions.
Yeah, which would be great.
Just to add a couple of comments, one is, I appreciate, I mean, this is a really great conversation. The one thing to consider, and I might have a little bit different opinion than Counselor Hayes, I would actually recommend picking a date after the election, because there could be three new counselors sitting here, as well as two new score, there's definitely going to be two new score, school board members, one of them is on finance, so, you know, when, if it was an off-year in which we're only electing two, then I could understand maybe doing it before, because there's some continuity with fewer people leaving, but when you have three, it could change the entire dynamic. So, I mean, if you propose a date before the election, you know, I'll support it, I'm just saying is that I think it's more logical to do one after, and, you know, when the new council's sworn in. Who knows, it might not change at all on our side.
Counsel Kiazos? Yeah, just to follow up on that too, it doesn't mean, I don't think it, it doesn't mean that we can't continue to do the work and continue to have the meeting. I think it's, it's more of a question of when do we bring it back and deliberate it as a whole. I think, you know, we've agreed as a joint finance to continue working through the process, because the business of the town has to go on, so, I think, I mean, I could support you the way, but I, but I do think that this shouldn't, that shouldn't prevent us from reaching out and starting the process of having the discussion.
Yeah, I would be in favor of when the communications committee says it's ready to come back, is when it should come back.
I think that's a good point.
Counsel Foley?
Yeah, I'm very good with most of this discussion. I want to be careful not to do the same, make the same mistake twice, though, in that we haven't talked with anybody on their communications committee yet. So, kind of like when I, you know, came in here and put what I thought was a great thing out here, and quickly realized that, oh yeah, I really didn't talk to some of those people yet, so we haven't spoken to them yet, so I'm not, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, they're in support of that as well. The other thing, I guess I would counter-argue the point around waiting till after the election, only that even if there are three new counselors here, the, the whole thing isn't going to get completed soup to nuts until after the election. But if we start the conversation, even if the three of you weren't here, I'd still want your input, whether it were... your input, whether it were as a sitting counselor or, you know, as a citizen, and I'm sure you could provide that either way, but I don't see that as a reason to feel hold off on trying to get these conversations going. Because like, you know, what happens is, we have the election, and then we have the holidays.
Right.
And then it's the middle of January, and we have five nor'easters in a row, and then it's March, and then it's April, and it's budget.
Budgets, three weeks.
And so, for me, it's about trying to stay ahead of that.
I do, before the table motion, I do want to make it clear is that the school board, particularly its leadership, even though I haven't talked to every individual there, has communicated with us, has responded, so it's not that they're not communicating at all, they are aware of this. And, you know, to be blunt or clear, I believe their preference is to move this beyond the election so that they have a full board that can participate in that, rather than, you know, one, at least one person that's leaving who is the current chair. So, and the issue is that they don't have the time, so I don't want anyone to think that they have not been responsive, 'cause they actually have been very responsive to this issue. So, with that, I would accept the table motion, and if you could also include, if you so choose, you don't have to, but if you can include a date certain to when this should come back.
So, I'll make up table the motion, and I will, November 1st or November 15th, either one. I mean, I don't know what people think, the 15th gives us a little bit more time.
15th is up to the election.
It's up to the election.
Right.
It'll be simple.
But no, but their new sitting, they wouldn't be sworn in until the December meeting, correct?
If they could participate, you know who they are.
They could participate.
You know who they are, they could.
We've had that happen.
That might not be a bad thing, though.
Actually, that might be the perfect way to do it, because then when everybody's here. So, why don't we say the 15th?
True.
So, the motion is the table order number seventeen dash oh eight oh to November 15th. Is there a second?
Second.
There's no debate, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Moving on to order number seventeen dash oh ninety-five, it's a first reading and schedule of public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 901, the Town of Scarborough's Garbage and Recycling Collection and Disposal Ordinance, Article One, Sections 1.09 and 1.10, as proposed by the ordinance committee. Before public comment, could I have an overview from the ordinance chairman?
Certainly. It's a pretty straightforward issue. This is an effort to keep trash cans from really becoming illegal temporary signs larger than allowed, they're obviously four-sided, and they are being put at the curb in the right-of-way. The carts are owned by the town, the trash cans go with the property, and defacing the carts can become a problem for the next owner. We are including a provision that will allow people to put the address on the cart so that it can be easily identified as their cart, and that's probably it.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Susan Hammel, Three Bay Street. I have a lot of concerns about this. I know that the bins are owned by the town, and they're expected to last for several decades, but placing stickers on them really doesn't harm them, and it might even prolong the life of the bin. I live in a very congested area. In the summertime on Bay Street, there are, there could, all the bins are on one side of the street, there could be 12 bins all in a row. And it could be renters, someone puts it out and tells their kid to go get it in the morning after it's been collected. Kid doesn't know which bin, and so if you, if you put some distinctive markings on them, like bumper stickers and crazy stickers, then it's pretty easy and very quickly you can identify which bin is yours. A small tag with just, or you write Three Bay Street, easily overlooked, and, I mean, I just hate it when someone takes my bin, because I get their bin, and we keep ours pretty clean, we know what to do with lobster, and most people don't.
True.
And I, then I have a lot of questions about how will the enforcement work? So, will the trash company notify all homeowners who have placed stickers? Will there be a fine? Will Public Works come around and inspect? What is Public Works sad about this? Are they, they're okay, are they okay with it? So, for a homeowner who's already got a lot of stickers on their bin, what are you, what are you gonna do there? Are they, are they gonna be required to replace their bin, even though it works perfectly Will the town only act on complaints? So, if somebody had a Trump bumper sticker, and the town gets a complaint, and then acts to enforce, couldn't we be, wouldn't that be unfair discrimination? If we were really only looking at those kinds of things? If someone else had a, you know, saddleback sticker on, and no one complains about that, that just wouldn't, wouldn't seem fair? And I, but I do think that you've got a, a big issue with, there are already hundreds of bins out there that have stickers on them, and I don't know how you're gonna deal with that. But I am sorry to see the council taking this up and spending time on this. I've heard that this change is being made in response to a single complaint about a political bumper sticker on someone's bin. I hate to see any enforcement time spent on this, it's money being spent on enforcement. And I really hate to think that the council is taking up a lot of time on this as well.
Any other public comments? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment, is there a motion from council?
There's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Counsel Kiazos.
So, if I could, the town manager through the chair, what is the cost of the bins per bin?
I beg your pardon, I don't, I don't.
How much do the bins cost per unit?
I understand the question, I don't know the answer to that question.
Oh, sorry, okay. Is that something that we could get from, from Public Works?
Certainly, yeah, I just don't have that readily available. I, I can have it to you right away in the morning.
Okay. That, to me, that would be important, because I think one of the, one of the possible outcomes maybe would be that the fine is the cost of the bin, because, so I have a couple issues with this, right? I mean, it's, it's public property, that's, that's the number one thing, okay? We don't put political bumper stickers on our police cars, our fire trucks, or our school buses. It's public property, it's paid for by the taxes, it's paid for by the public, it's public property. That, to me, supersedes anybody's individual right to put on what they feel like, because it's in front of their house. So, I, I have a challenge with that argument against it. As an enforcement issue, perhaps we give them the option to purchase. That way, the next, if they eventually do sell their home, or the next person inherits it, then they can start with a clean barrel, and they can move on, and if people want to dedicate it, decorate it, then so be it. I don't know how we would enforce that, I don't know how we would record it, but that may be an option to look at as well for second reading or a possible amendment. But I, I think that, I can see that as being a reasonable response to someone who wants to decorate their own trash can, but short of that, I would have a real problem allowing anybody to, I don't wanna say desecrate, that's probably a bad word, decorate town property to their own personal likings, 'cause they may not like little flower bumper stickers or unicorns and rainbows. I mean, I don't wanna look at that every day across the street from mine, so, it's my thought.
Counsel Rowan.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate Ms. Hammel's comments and Counsel Kiazos. I think I look at it more as the fairness to the future owner who's gonna inherit that, that bin. I think that, that being able to mark it with the address is sufficient to be able to sell them apart, if there's a, it'll at least straighten, straighten out the bins, but that's where I stand.
Counsel Foley.
Um, so I have kind of a different view, I guess, and part of it is, so I live on a, a road that is, I mean, we all know when it's Sunday, 'cause you can hear the rumbling down the gravel road, and my dog goes crazy, 'cause she hears it's very loud when they walk the bins down. And we only have three houses that service my road, so there's really only six bins there, but I can tell you every single week, it's like, oh crap, did I, was I the first two, was I the middle two, was I the last two? I don't know sometimes, because sometimes I put mine out, and my neighbors before me, sometimes they're after. The funny part about this conversation for me is that my neighbors are Macs and Apple people, and I'm a PC. So, that has become kind of our little standing joke on the road, they have little, you know, they're advertising for Apple, you know, little Apple stickers, nothing big, nothing, anyone driving by wouldn't even be able to see that they have that on there. But since they put their Apple sticker on there, you know, we've never been mixed up since then. I struggle with trying to rationalize in my head that we have a big issue to solve with this, and that it's a big problem. I just haven't seen or heard from any, I haven't seen a single complaint, so if we got one complaint, I, I don't know, I haven't seen it. And I, I just feel like we're trying to solve a problem that isn't there, and the enforcement piece is, you know, we did have one barrel, I know that was hit by a snowplow, and the, it was unreparable, so that, you know, it had to be replaced or whatnot. Those are, things are gonna happen from time to time, but I guess the cost of, would be interesting, but I just, I can't support this as it is, I just feel like we're going way too far. That's all.
Counsel Hayes.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I'm having a hard time with this also, for several reasons. One, been here three years, I've never had a single complaint about it. How long, how long have we had the barrels?
Most of the ones still deployed are the originals, so it's, it's over 10 years at this point.
Well, I've had, I've had our barrels 10 years, and, and I do, I have a saddleback sticker on each one, 'cause the same thing, we live in a development, we're at the end of the road, all lined up for 12 different barrels, and so it's really easy to come in and see, and I would, I haven't had a single complaint, I actually haven't seen very many barrels that are, you know, with a lot of stickers on them. I would suggest that, you know, the only thing I, I could support is that at the point in time someone turns their barrels back in, they're held accountable for making sure all the stickers are removed. But I, I just, from an enforcement point of view, and be able to enforce it fairly and equitably across all of Scarborough, I just see it's, it's, just see little value in just spending those types of resources to worry about stickers on trash cans. I, I do agree, if we have to turn them back to the town, the individuals should be responsible for getting them cleaned, however they do that. But I think putting fines on it and all of this type of stuff is just a little, a little over the top, so I, I can't support it as well. And then the, the second question I ask, if it goes forward, what are you gonna do about all of the folks that have already have decorated their barrels? Are their fines gonna apply to them when they decorated and there wasn't this ordinance in place? And it feels a little unfair to go back and penalize them sort of retrospectively for something that wasn't in place? So, I'd like to see how we address barrels that are already decorated, what do we do?
Counsel Rowan.
I just wanted to read what, what it is that we're, the change that we're making. So, the, the new language that we're inserting is that residents may choose to mark their carts with the street address that the cart was assigned to for identification purposes. Under no circumstances should the carts be defaced by the use of markers, stickers, or paint. A cart that has been defaced will be replaced at cost to the resident to whom the cart was assigned, and may be subject to further penalties under section, under Article Four. So, I think what we're talking about is really just we're charging the homeowner to replace it, and it's not a matter of, you don't turn the cart back into the town when you, when you move, you just leave it there, and then it's just kind of...
Well, the same thing, they're responsible for cleaning it before they, if they leave it for the next resident.
Well, I, I think that that's it, yeah.
Thank you for reading that, actually, to clarify. Counsel Kiazos.
So, I can understand amnesty for, for immigrants and aliens, I have a hard time with amnesty for barrels. I, I think it's public property, that's the bottom line to me, okay? Whether people are using, I understand the intent, it's to differentiate, okay? You go to an airport, people don't put giant, most people, you put a, you can put a ribbon, you can put a tag or something on a barrel that identifies it as yours, you can do something unique to that without defacing public property. So, I, I agree, it's also not necessarily something I would want to spend a lot of time with, but to me, it's black and white. It's public property, we've all paid for it, there are tax dollars that were put towards this in the first place, so what gives an individual the, the ability to supersede that? We don't put bumper stickers on public vehicles. It doesn't mean that people don't have opinions, it just means that it's public property. It's, to me, it's pretty straightforward.
Counsel Sinclair.
It's a trash, I do have to, I know, I have like a, I think I had a brain cramp. Um, got you on that. Private joke. Um, it's a trash can, the trash can. I, correct me if I'm wrong, if there is a trash can right now that has been defaced with stickers or whatever, people are gonna be charged now to replace them according to the way the ordinance is written? Yes, Counsel Rowan?
I believe so. Yeah, with Rowan, yes.
I can't, I, yeah, I can't, I, I can't support that.
Counsel Kiazos.
So, I believe you have the ability to rectify the situation before you're charged.
Yes, I do, I do.
And I, you know, depending on who puts the stickers on it, would depend on how the stickers come off. Olive oil works great, I know that, but that's just an Italian solution.
Any other comments? Counsel Foley.
It's funny, because the first thing I thought of when I thought of this was, I grew up, went to Catholic schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and, you know, you were assigned a locker, and that locker belonged to the school. And I can remember Sister Joan, you know, with her ruler, and yes, she did carry a ruler around the school, and talking about how you were not to decorate the outside of your locker. Now, you can open up the inside of your locker, and you could put your, you know, posters of David Cassidy or whatnot. The school also, okay, did you, I, whatever, I'm aging myself. The school also issued us, you know, textbooks. We were offered the opportunity to, to have some personal identity in a place where everything was uniform. And, and when I think about this, it's like, I just, I'd love to know what the, I, I've just not seen trash barrels that have been horribly defaced to such a degree, or even decorated to such a good degree that I'm thinking, oh my goodness, what were they thinking when they're doing that? Maybe they're out there, I, I don't know, but, you know, there are plenty of other things, like the address for your house is a safety piece, right? You're supposed to have the address, and, and there's pieces on the curb, but on our homes, we can choose to have a really ornate display of our number, or maybe we wanna make our number in duct tape on our front door. As long as the police and fire can see it, and they can identify our house, there's something a little bit unique, and I just, I, again, I, I just see it as chasing our tail for something that just doesn't seem to be worth, worthwhile. Again, unless I'm missing, I'd love to see some pictures of something that is offensive, I just haven't seen it, and maybe it's out there, but anyway.
So, be free, I'm gonna talk, if you don't mind. So, I think this is, so, by the way, go online, and even, I personally have never seen it here in Scarborough, but decorating recycling cans like this, or cans, is a big thing, and some, most of it is not really...
Do they dazzle them?
Well, I don't know what they do, but no, there's some that, it's a whole artistic expression issue in which people do paint those in many communities. Sometimes it's encouraged, sometimes it's not. The issue is, we, this is an example of us living in a too sensitive of a society, and we have to react to it. And that's because, you know, one person's art is another person's immorality to some extent, so, you know, it's how do we control, and how do we manage to that content? And so, I personally resolve to, it's public property, we have a right to set some expectations around that, but I wanna wait and listen to the public hearing, so I'll at least approve it tonight, so I can get to the public hearing. Counsel Kiazos.
So, I, I, I very much appreciate Counsel Foley's analogy of putting duct tape on her house. The difference, though, is that the house is your property, and you could put a sign up in your yard as well, but to me, the differentiating factor is this is town property, so. And I do think unfortunately, it has to be, it, because if we let a little bit be okay and not a lot, it really does have to be definitive, and, and it has to be easily, as easily enforceable as possible, which is why I think it has to be all or nothing in this instance. That's the only way to kinda keep it fair, and instead of regulating it to a small sticker in the corner, I, I think it needs to be, it needs to be pretty clear.
Counsel Rowan.
I would also turn the analogy, if you're renting your house, and you put duct tape all over it, you'd be responsible for the, for the damage when you look down.
Thank you. With that, oh, Counsel Hayes.
Again, I'm probably, I'm probably not gonna support this, 'cause I think, but if it does go to the, the, really would like us to think through the amnesty piece. I mean, I've got, in my neighborhood, I've got, I use stickers, the stickers will come up. All my other neighbors have painted number four on it, or number three on it, wherever their house is. And I tell you, if all of a sudden we go to our constituents and we change the rule, and I bet those cans are probably 50 bucks a piece.
More.
Probably, 100 bucks a piece? Just think through, if we're gonna go back and retroactively, someone's gonna go around and look at every single trash can in town and assess retroactive penalties, I, I think that would be a PR nightmare. So, I just think we need to think through what we wanna do, what steps to put in place. I, I can, going forward is different than penalizing someone that did it five years ago, and now assessing them 100... So I just think we need to think through what we want to do, the steps to put in place. I can, going forward is different than penalizing someone that did it five years ago, and now assessing them 100 dollar penalty, so it could be 200 dollars per household.
Or someone who inherited that trash can that already had stickers on it.
I think, I think it's a PR nightmare, but for what it's worth.
Counselor O'Denovan, sorry.
The ordinance committee will have the opportunity to talk about this, which I think will be helpful in advance of the public hearing and the second reading. So, but we'll, we've heard all the comments, and we'll, and we'll kind of bore down a little bit. I did think that Counselor Hayes's identification of some barrels as having the number on the street, that's allowed.
But it was painted on.
But it's allowed.
As long as it's the address.
Yeah, it doesn't matter whether it's painted on, or stenciled on, or stickered on. If you're just putting the address on, on the barrel for the purpose of identification, it's allowed.
Thank you. Not seeing any other questions, I'm going to ask to remove the question. All those in favor of the first reading and sending it to a public hearing, please vote. One, two, three, four, those opposed. One, two, three, thank you, it does pass. Order number 17-096 is an act on the request for an order directing the town manager to process payments for the tax abatements for the 2012 to 2015 consolidated tax appeals in accordance with the Board of Assessment Review's decision of May 10, 2017, and further authorizing the use of funds from the designated fund balance to satisfy these obligations. Before public comment, I'd like to have the manager provide an overview.
This, this is a matter that's been the subject of some discussion through the years with counsel. Most of that discussion has occurred in executive sessions, as, and we still are in current litigation regarding the matter. Essentially, where the, these tax appeals sit at this point is the Board of Assessment Review on remand did make a final decision, and that is that decision that's being now appealed. And this order comes forward, and I suggested to the counsel, really in an effort to stop interest accruing, continuing to accrue to these accounts, just to put a finer point to that, we have interest expense in the order of 75 dollars a day, or about 2,200 dollars a month that are accruing. So this action would have us pay out these abatements as directed by your appointed local Board of Assessment Review, and we'll certainly continue through the legal process. There may be some further reconciliation depending on that decision, but at this point, we'll at least be able to gain control and stop the interest from accruing.
With that, is there anybody that would like to speak on the item?
Larry Hartwell, nine period and drive. I'm glad that you came forward and disclosed your violation on the, on your trash can. While we're out doing that, remember, but remember, the person that's going out and looking at all the signs that are illegal, which is literally everyone in town, they can also do that. So, onto this item here. It looked pretty benign on the agenda, but something basic was missing, like, okay, what is the tax abatement? How much is it? Oh, it's about a half a million dollars. I think it should have been in the, in the board package for tonight. I mean, it wasn't there, and I don't know where are we going with this? Have we spent 100,000, 200,000 in legal fees? With a court settlement, can it end up being 2 or 3 million dollars? But at least we could have had the half a million dollars listed there, and something more than just a benign entry like we, like we saw on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the item?
Susan Hammel, Three Bay Street. I'm certainly in favor of getting, making these payments. 7% interest is a lot more than we can get anywhere else, so. Yeah, 463,000 is, as I understand it, the minimum amount that the town can expect to pay. And the final total, pending the outcome of this, of the court, could be considerably more money. It would be great if the town could disclose what is the range, what is the range of possibilities? So that as we're starting to think about next year's budget, and as the voters are considering the public safety building bond issue, if, if we were looking at a 4 million dollar charge that the town might have to pay on this abatement ultimately, which we really don't know, it would be nice to know what the range might be. And it's, I don't know, you know, what confidentiality or what, why that couldn't be disclosed. In a case like this, typically, courts have found the penalty to be between X and Y. In spite of the fact that our Board of Assessment Review has made a decision, made their final decision, and I don't, I did have a couple of, there, how does that rule of 400,000 dollars, anything over 400, goes out to voters, if it's going to be bonded? How does that apply here? Will the town be required to pay legal fees since they basically were found at fault? And it would really be nice to know what's the total amount the town has spent on legal fees since this began? And I've heard 500,000? Not 100,000, 500,000. I know how expensive these things can get, and this has been going on for a long time. And I think that's an important, important to know. And then when it's all said and done, finally, we can put this behind us, let's look back at this, and what can we learn from it as a town, and as a town council, and, and the staff, everybody involved? Because if something like this came up again in the future, it would be great to have those lessons fresh in mind. Thanks.
Any other public comments? Not seeing any. I would like to answer a couple of the questions that were, before we begin the conversation, that were asked, and I'll have the manager chime in if I go down the wrong path, or. But my basic understanding is that, first of all, regarding the rules of 400,000 dollars that's within the charter, that only applies to general obligation bonds. So if we send something out for bonding, then it does have to go to the voters if it's 400,001 dollar, or even 400,099 cents. So because this is coming from an designated fund, it's like any other expense, and it's actually just simply approved by the council as a whole. And does it require five votes? Like, is it, or is it, no, just a roll call vote? Because it's expenditure? Does it require, yeah? Just majority, okay. Regarding the legal fees, my understanding that it's public, public knowledge, it's, I don't know if it's ever been asked, I have never been asked. The legal fees are about 280,000 dollars to date, which covers four years' worth of litigation and appeals and other activities from the, from the attorneys. Is that about right?
No, actually, it's about 360.
Oh, I apologize.
And that, and that does not include, and I can find this out, I just don't have it available to me right now, assistance provided to the Board of Assessment Review. They provide, we provide separate legal counsel for them as well.
The last question was about what can we learn from that, and that's really an opinion, so I'm not really going to go into kind of that question, because I have an opinion regarding that on my own. The other piece I wanted to, what was the other question? There was one more.
The question is, what's the, what are the, what's the range of exposure here, I guess?
I'd have to refer to you to...
All I can say is, two days ago, or late last week, briefs were filed, and so that was our first hint at what plaintiffs are seeking. And frankly, the percentages, I've not calculated them out. I believe those documents can be made public, and I'll certainly allow people to have access to those if you like.
And then the last question was, that I remember, was not only on the range, the baseline is the settlement that the Board of Assessment, basically the council has, has understood that that baseline will not go any lower. So even though it is an appeal, that's going to be the baseline, so why not try to make the settlement today? The second is, is that from what I understand, this range for an initial, you know what, I'm going to hold off, because I'm seeking opinion, so I apologize. But with that, is there a motion from counsel? And a second?
Second.
Is there any comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Kieza?
I'll try and keep it, not opinionated. I mean, the fact of the matter is that this is a legal proceeding, and there's two parties in every legal proceeding. I don't know necessarily, I think once, once it's settled and finally completed to the satisfaction of both parties, I think it would be very good to have a debrief and a discussion of the parameters around it. But until that time, I think we need to just do the, the base bottom that we talked about through the assessment, the Board of Assessment's decision. We know that that's the minimal amount, we can't change the proceedings at all, we're in the process of that, so I think we, we need to, need to minimize whatever fiscal losses that we can.
Other comments or questions? I did want to, Counselor Hayes, a jury.
Yeah, I was going to say, I support you on this, because as I stated, there's a minimum amount known, there's interest accruing every single day, and as, as a share, the interest payments alone are about 2,200 dollars a month. So at least taking this step now turns off that interest clock, which I think is just a prudent thing for us to do at this point in time.
I did want to answer, there was an additional question about pack, why things weren't included in the package for the public. I did want to clarify that both the language of the motion, as well as what was provided, was given under legal, legal direction, our town council, our town council's legal advice. So that's what we've provided, and it's based upon, basically the confidentiality of what is still pending before the appeal, the appeals court, is how I understand it. I think that this is fiscally responsible, but it's somewhat inconvenient, given the circumstances around what we're looking at financially in the town. But it's absolutely necessary, because it recognizes that there is a, at least a bottom, we don't know where the top is going to go. But I hope that in this discussion and conversation, that there is absolute clear transparency, because what people don't understand, because of the comments that are being made, is that this started out, the actual loss to the, to the claimants was 13,000 dollars, and they're receiving 471,000 dollars, and they're arguing for more, up in the millions of dollars. So as soon as that becomes clear and transparent to this community, I hope they understand why we have been so defensive in this and protecting the town, because it's astronomical what is happening behind the scenes. Any other comments, questions?
I just want to be clear, this, this motion gives me broad authority to use up, to use fund balance to satisfy the full obligation, should, should it be necessary. There are monies in FY '18 budget called the overlay, the express purpose of which is to pay abatements. So I'll do a final calculation, I may choose to use, I don't use all of that, because we'll need to fund other abatements presumably through the course of the year, but there may be some funds in FY '18 that can be applied toward this payment, and therefore, use of fund balance will be that much less. Once I finalize that evaluation, I'll certainly advise you of that. But this does give me the broad authority to use to go for the full amount from fund balance, should it be necessary.
Counselor Kieza?
So, and I'll defer to the town manager for this, would it be possible to explain, how can I say this? This doesn't necessarily resolve the case, it could be, could you explain what the, why we're, not necessarily why we're doing, we know why we're doing this, but, but that this doesn't resolve this issue? There is still potential through the legal proceedings, and stop me if I go too far here, that the, the penalty for the town could be greater if the court rules in favor of the plaintiffs?
Yes, it certainly could be.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's what's on appeal as we speak. And as has been characterized, this payment that we've calculated, and we picked a point in time, this is end of October 6, assuming that's when we process and make payment, would be the floor. It wouldn't be less than this, it could be more. Our legal counsel, well, I won't get into the strategy, but...
I just want to be clear, this doesn't settle this issue?
No, by no means.
Okay.
It simply is, is acting on the Board of Assessment Review's decision.
Any other comments? Not seeing any? All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to order number 17-097. It is an, sorry, Act on, Act to Adopt the Fiscal Year 2018 School Budget Resolutions as Required by State Statute, this is presented to us by the school department. I'd like to ask the manager to give us a high-level overview.
Yes, this is a fairly routine procedure, though it's been a long time in coming. We finally do have a school budget, and the school is required to the Department of Education to place the, the approved amounts in the authorized categories, if you will, and that's what this accomplishes.
Not seeing any other, sorry, not having any other comments from the manager, I'm going to open up to public comment. Anybody that would like to speak? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment. Is there a motion from counsel?
So moved.
Any questions, comments from counsel? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to order number 17-098. It's an act on the request pursuant to order number 16-024, for the town council to review and approve the design and sitting, sitting of...
Sitting.
Sitting, sorry, of outdoor recreation amenities within Memorial Park, as presented by the manager. Would the manager give an overview?
Yes, this council may recall, I'm not sure if all of you were actually seated at the time, this matter was really a budget matter, and on May 18, 2016, the council had some discussion around this issue. I think you may have received some commentary from the public as well, and there was a directive given to staff to work with the appropriate committees, namely the senior advisory group, who really spawned this idea in the first instance, and that the council, and was further clear that they wanted these facilities to be located somewhere in Memorial Park, and that you'd like to see the final result. And through the course of many months, working with the public safety advisory group in terms of their process, and conducting a bit of the initial phase, if you will, of the master plan of our campus here, there were a number of different proposals, and Todd Souza, Director of Committee Services, is here tonight to share with you the, kind of the final concept plan. So if you'll indulge, Todd's impatient, and if you give him five minutes, he can give you a quick overview.
Thank you. Again, as Mr. Hall said, this project was going on beginning of the year, I arrived in end of April, so coming in this project. The initial design was to use the existing skate park and relocate that as a primary choice for the location of this community gaming area, even though it was driven by the senior advisory committee, kind of looking at how it affects the entire community and just not, but taking in those factors. So looking at that, the skate park area, we met with staff, we met with the senior advisory board, we had a survey online, and this is him, like, you know, today requesting later this afternoon, regarding the survey. The survey was a loose survey that we did with a piece of paper, and kind of filling out choices with, at the senior activities. We only received 30 of those back, but they kind of ranked out what they'd like to see. We had a lot of communication with the public after attending public safety meetings and how it would affect this area and the park. Some of the initial thoughts about having the section at the skate park was closed parking and access to the back of a potential public safety building. One of the final designs of public safety building was the road would be one-way, which would lead to parallel parking. And after talking with the seniors, that's a difficult challenge to parallel park. So rather than relocating two projects, we started looking at other alternatives, and down by, I think you have designs, down by the Memorial Park concession area, between the soccer field and the back of the concession area, was a choice that met the needs, where we had, we had parking, we had access to the facilities, and so that's when we started working with the other groups and other departments. At that point, working with our planning department, Public Works and Community Services, came up with this, this kind of level design, that the design that you saw showed a retaining wall on it, and just after our final outlay with Public Works, if this goes forward, we've, we've kind of reconfigured, just a tweak, to be able to take that wall away and not have that expense and have everything on one flat level at that sublevel, which will, which will reduce the cost of the, the project. And so based on the public safety, we decided to move that. Looking at that gamer area, we've got parallel parking, like I said, I think we've, we can stretch our dollar, we can definitely do it for under cost, and kind of keeping that cost as low as possible. We can definitely do it for under cost and kind of keeping that cost as low as possible. And again, the seniors for the ease of the access and the comfort of being close. The one thing you saw in the kind of Google overlay that I did, nothing professional by any, one of the comments that they liked about was having things spread out a little bit, so you weren't kind of one activity on top of another, and a lot of those have flexible footprints where if we decide to build grass bocce courts over here, or we're doing beanbag games over here, which are increasingly popular for all ages and not just seniors, those footprints can be moved at a later date. It's not a structure that, the pickleball courts would be the two fixtures, so that was kind of the primary focus. And I can't say enough about our work with our planning department and Public Works for taking on this challenge, because those are contracted services that we don't have to put out, that we're doing in-house with our own resources on their schedule, so. That's kind of where we are right now with this project. We've got, we've got everything in place pending approval to start putting this ball in motion if that's what you choose.
Any questions? Councilor Kiazza?
So how did this plan take into consideration the recommendations from the consultants who were doing the master plan for the campus? How did that play into this decision?
As far as the, when they looked at initially the parking lot, I mean, the skate park area, we didn't get, see, they didn't really feedback back because it's not changing any of our, like, it's not a future expansion for anything else, facility or a building. It's kind of tucked into an area that's, it's a graded hill right now. And so planning didn't have any concerns as far as that. It was actually one of their original recommendations to look at that area.
Well, yeah, I wasn't referring to necessarily the planning department. I was referring to the consultants. Didn't we hire a consultant as part of the public safety to evaluate, preliminarily evaluate the master plan for the campus? So I guess what I'm asking is, how does this fit in with the master plan? Was this area designated as a recreational area in the master plan? And is there an outcome that we can see from the council from that report?
Got you. I did not consult with a consultant. I just consulted with the planning department.
Okay.
The predated, Todd.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
In Memorial Park, I viewed as a recreational area.
Sure.
So I didn't take it as we were taking an alternate site for a different use.
Frankly, with the council's direction that it be somewhere in Memorial Park, you really, you've limited our options in many respects. The master campus plan, coordination with the public safety was really important in terms of their roadway, how far it encroached on the park, whether there's any kind of on-street parking opportunities to help enhance, so there was great collaboration there. I don't think they had any great concern, other than they wanted, they wanted us to make sure that these were convenient to parking and to existing facilities. And frankly, this location at the other end of the park really is a better location in so many respects than using the skate park.
Yeah, if I could just follow up, though. I mean, part of my concern, and I said it before with the public safety building...
So, councilor, if we can, because we haven't had a chance to hear public comments as well, so before we get into a dialogue or debate, if there are any technical questions, I mean, your first question was perfect, but if there are any technical questions to staff, I'd like to be able to open it up to public comment. Yes, councilor?
Just one question from, through the town manager. You said it comes in under budget. What is, what was the, under cost, you said?
Yeah. Initially, the budget was for this project to have all these kind of identified things. $100,000 was set aside for this project, and that was...
It was in CFP. I think it was two budgets to go, actually.
Two budgets to go, yes.
So is it parked, sort of a restricted funding type? We funded it in the mil rate two years ago, basically, right?
Yeah, I believe with, I don't recall if it was appropriate. If it was, we carried that money over, so it's available for this use, yes.
So you said it's, so the budget was $100, so what's it, what's it...
Right, and it depends on how the phases go. Right now, when we're looking at construction of the pickleball courts, using our resources through the town, it's about $44,000 to create those two courts. And then the other amenities or choices that will continue to go through the process if we want to have grass bocce. We're trying not to say, here it all, here's everything. Taking one thing, surveying a little more, what type of courts do we want? Do we want cement? Do we want it here? And as we've, we're kind of looking at that phases, this is not a money that I see that's going to go away, to make sure we're prudent with how we spend those funds.
Right. The other, the other big cost is the pavilion. That was one of the things they asked for, and that can be quite pricey depending on what the design and, so I think we want to kind of search that a little further and understand what the need there is and if there's another way to accomplish the concern.
So I guess my question is that we, to do everything that's on here that you've shown us, is that $100?
No, everything except for the pavilion, like I said in my memo.
So how much more is the pavilion? I know it's, but...
Again, pavilions can range, if we buy material and build it ourselves, if it's something that's fabricated, if it's how the size of it. A lot of the seniors, we're talking about a picnic area.
Right.
That's shaded and away from the sun, so that's something that, again, it could be as grand or as simple as we want it to be, so we haven't done a lot of, because we knew that was kind of a bigger piece to this. You know, you start getting into it, and size is the, in the design of it.
Just a ballpark, how big of a breadbox is it?
I mean, in my opinion, we should build something that hoses, because we do events out there, like we just did our 55-plus barbecue.
Right.
And we had 20 tables out there under a tent, which we rent. And so to me, it would be something that would hose eight to 10 picnic tables with the flexibility of being a little tighter. So you're probably talking like a 30 by 50 pavilion to make that happen.
So you're talking 30 grand, 40?
30, 40, 50,000 dollars, depending if it's vinyl, wood, rebuilt it, it's a contracted kit, is it powered, is there lights? All those choices to what you're actually considering.
If there's any other technical questions, or if there's not any other technical questions, I'd like to thank you for staying and sharing, but open it up to any public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Good evening. G. Marie Catarina, 311 Gorham Road. As you are probably aware, I'm a member of the senior advisory board, and I know that the seniors are pretty impatient, shall I say, that they'd really like to see this plan done and accomplished. It has been on the drawing board for a couple of years. I know that the attitude of many of the seniors is, geez, we aren't asking for a whole lot. Can't we just have this small recreation area? As far as the pavilion is concerned, again, the, my understanding is that their concern is, you know, the sun, and I can say for a fact, when I was younger, I used to be able to lay on the beach and all day and all night, but now that I'm older, no. You know, I can't sit in the sun for that amount of time. So even if it's something as simple as a pergola, I believe they would be happy with that. It's just the shade, shade aspect of it. So I also know seniors who are very disappointed to see that there was something written in some blog or whatever that, you know, you know, there's no money for this, and why are we spending this money? And, you know, again, just consider who, who this is primarily serving. Seniors are the ones who are asking for it, but it will serve the whole community. And I personally think it would be a great addition, so I certainly hope that you will all support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Larry Hartwell, now impure and drive. I wish I didn't have to keep you up here and saying negative things, but it's the way it rolls. So we have $823,000 that we've disclosed tonight of payments and legal fees for the town council, and an unknown amount of legal fees for the tax appeals board. And that's our minimum number. That's been established tonight, is our minimum number. The pavilion, the senior rec area, all good things. A dome over the athletic field would be a good thing, too. But we have a million dollars baseline expense here on the tax abatement. I think the $100,000 should be not spent on this. This should be, you know, our reserves are down, certainly on the town side, we know the school side, too, and we know what next year looks like, both on the town and the school side. So I would hate to say it, but I think we should defer this expenditure at this time.
Any other comments?
I'm Sue Hamel, 3 Bay Street. My only comment about this is they waited a long time for this. I would, I would just want to be sure that what we are, what we are building and constructing is indeed what they want. And I participated in an online Survey Monkey that was up on the Community Services website, and I'm, I'm just curious to find out how many participants weighed in on that, and what were the results? It was available to anybody in the town to, to answer. And, you know, it's, they have waited a really long time, and we've, they've been asking for a senior center forever. And this is something that clearly they're only going to be able to use for part of the year. I think it makes a lot of sense. And just, just to be sure, though, that what we're, what we're going to be putting out there is, in fact, what they want. And that you've really done the homework to make sure, and that these groups have responded and are with it.
Any other comments? Not seeing any? Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilor Kiazza?
So now I'll vent my frustration. I, I'm, I recall when we put the public safety building together, part of the discussion was to, we, I think we pulled another $45,000 or something out of an account, so that we would have the consultant do a master plan for the campus. The reason I'm harping on this and focusing on this right now is because we do have long-range issues that we are trying to accommodate, whether it's school-related or community, community centers and that kind of stuff. So I do appreciate, I'm not going to not support this project. I voted for it, put the money in there. My frustration is, I want to see the master plan, but we keep doing these projects, and we're doing them immediately right now without looking at the long term. And I'd like to see a master plan so that we can incorporate this into the right areas at the right time, so that we don't have to eventually move this stuff at some point. I like the fact that it's flexible. The pickleball courts, obviously, are the only fixed asset there. That's fine. I guess my frustration is, is that we paid $45,000 for a master plan evaluation, and I thought we were going to see something out of that. So if I was misunderstood, if I misunderstood that, then I apologize, but I thought that was the intention.
Yes, there is all intentions of doing a full master campus plan. We accelerated the portion, including Memorial Park, only because of this, and more importantly, the public safety building demanded that attention be paid there first. We have not advanced the rest of the plan yet. We're, I think we have a kickoff meeting to restart that in 10 days or so. And that will involve a whole bunch of other stakeholders. Schools in active participation at that. Certainly the library, they're very interested. And so I think what you're referring to is certainly will be coming. With respect to these facilities, again, with all due respect, when the council directs that these facilities are to be somewhere in Memorial Park, that really limits us. And there's not a universe of opportunities. And given the fact that these facilities need to be conveniently and appropriately located, they're not, again, a universe of opportunities. So I think you'll be satisfied when you see the larger plan and planning process, and I'll certainly make you aware of that if any and all of you want to be part of it. But that, that work is really just commencing.
I'm going to ask Councilor Rohn, it's because he's also the liaison to the committee, so if you can...
Sure. So the, Mr. Susan has been to the 55-plus advisory board meetings several months over a long period of time, and this has been actively discussed. Certainly, they don't represent all the seniors in town, but they definitely are some very vocal and active ones, and they're, they're very supportive of this site. They like the activities. I think there's some discussion around, you know, some of them would like to see shuffleboard included, but I think this is indicated that this is still kind of flexible in terms of what's going to be there. The other thing that's really nice about this plan is that, other than the pickleball courts and the pavilion, when it, when, if it's eventually built, is that it's all pretty flexible in terms of chess boards can be moved, cornhole boards can be moved, croquet can certainly be played pretty much on any grassy, grassy area, horseshoes, so there's bocce, yeah. So, so in general, I'm incredibly supportive of this.
Saw a couple of hands up here first. Councilor Sinclair?
I guess, you know, I was the liaison to seniors, so I've been kind of familiar with the conversations and did support when we really put the money in the budget. Although I'd be more comfortable if we really had a much better handle on what is, what it is we're going to do definitely, and what the budget's going to be for. To say, it might be, you know, 40 or 45,000, or it might be 150,000. I'd like to have that fleshed out a little bit more, so I don't know if we get, I guess I'd make a motion at some point after the discussion about, I would like to get a little more definitive answers. I think the questions asked from the audience about, if it is in flux about what we're going to build, let's, let's get it right. Let's make sure we know the budget and make sure we're informed about what we're approving, because we are facing a challenging budget season, so big difference between 50 and 150, so. So, and I guess my question to the chair is, tonight, are we approving the conceptual design, or are we just also approving the expenditure to deliver the conceptual design?
Myers, we are, because the expenditure has already been approved?
Only for 100, though, not for...
Yes. And that would be a limit. We cannot spend any more than authorized, so to give you comfort, there's certainly...
Also the pavilion, so it's not, if the pavilion...
Our intent is to do as much as we possibly can within the existing budget, and we don't have a fine enough detail. It's quite possible we're able to do all of it.
I didn't understand. I thought it was open ended, so.
And then, and any additional expenditures, so if they're able to do everything except for the pavilion, under $100,000, and it costs them more for the pavilion, they're going to have to come back and make the request for the additional funding?
Thank you.
Councilor Sinclair?
Two things. One, it's my opinion, this is the least we can do for the seniors in this town. We are constantly, constantly talking about the schools and not that there's anything wrong with that, because that's a huge part of our community, but there's a whole other part of our community that has been very patiently waiting for something, anything. My, these people, clearly, I don't want to spend $100,000. I don't. The state that we're in, it bothers me. But the money's there, it's been there, we voted on it. Two years ago, they asked, I mean, they've been asking for something from us. So to me, this is, I can't, it's a no-brainer. I mean, the patience that these people have had, and, you know, like one speaker we had, you know, we're not talking about, about, you know, kids have time. Some of these seniors don't. So they don't have a lot of time. So the sooner we can get this done, let's just get it done. And the other piece of this, for the overall scope of Memorial Park, is that, which we learned a lot about going through the process of the police department, there is not a lot of space left on our campus. We are running out of space rapidly. And not only that, but to Councilor Kiazza's point a little bit, the space that is there, like, some people have made comments to me, like, oh, there's, there's tons of space. Oh, there's space everywhere. Okay, you might see a parcel of land, but that doesn't mean it's buildable. That doesn't mean we can put a parking lot there. That doesn't mean we can put anything there. So we have, with this, where this location is, we didn't have a lot of options. So not only are we running out of space, but because of the clientele that's going to be using this area, we have to be very conscious of where this went. They had to have access to handicap parking, they had to have access to parking, they had to have access to facilities. They're not asking for a lot. For the amount of things that we do in this town, this is not a lot. It's something I, like, it burned my biscuits when people have problems with these seniors in this town. And if you look at the numbers, the seniors in this town are, they're going to start overtaking some of you guys. So we really need to make sure that we're treating them, and they, they have earned and are due that respect, even more so. So I think, well, I guess, obviously, clearly, you know where I stand. I'm going to support this.
Any other comments? Councilor Paulie?
So I listened on the council when this, when that money was approved, but I certainly would have supported it then, and I, I agree, it's, they've been waiting patiently, and it's time to do something. To me, it seems that the space has been well thought out. You know, what I love about this project is that it's, for me, it's truly intergenerational space. And we talk about the need to bring, you know, those pieces together, and that's what this does. And so the one thing that I would be really fearful of losing would be that pavilion because of the sun and the heat and the rain. Because if I'm a grandparent, I mean, I know my own mother, I don't want her out in the sun for four hours watching her grandkids. You know, if she has a shaded space and it's located near the back, it's perfect, you know. So for me, that's almost the most important thing, because something like bocce, I mean, I have... like bocce, I mean, I have bocce in my car right now, we could go play in the parking lot, that's why I love bocce, because it can be played anywhere.
Right.
So it doesn't have to have a ring and a sign that says, this is the only place you can play bocce, you can, you know, do that. And pickleball, um, is an interesting little sport, I don't know much about it, but, um, it was hot, hot, hot down in Florida, I can tell you that, when I spent a year, the winter down there. And so I'm excited to learn.
Yeah.
So I, uh, yeah, I fully support this. I get that we are, um, looking at tight budgets. I would like to see, you know, more definitive pieces around the budget exactly for the project, but I think this is a must-do. Second to a pool, but we're, we don't have that in the budget, so.
Councilor Donovan?
Yeah, I support this. I like the site, it's near existing bathrooms and parking, that's a very efficient design. The space is underutilized at the present time. This was fully aired when we, when we put it out two years ago, it's long overdue, has been a lot of patience exhibited here and some frustration. The pavilion is obviously a good idea. Uh, I like the fact that we're getting good value from the town, doing much of the work. A hundred thousand dollars is all we have, can't, uh, we'll see how far we go, but I, I'm very pleased with this.
Thank you. Councilor Sinclair?
Just one more quick point, something that, a little bit more on what Councilor Foley touched on, but, you know, one thing that we're talking a lot about is, is really trying to bring our town together. And what a fabulous way to integrate more of our town and make it more of a hub, if we're helping our seniors have a place to intermingle also at the same time with other residents of town and with the school-aged kids and with, um, families and with concerts and, you know, concerts in the park and things like that, we're just, I think it's going to be a wonderful way for us to start really focusing more on making this town center. Um, and I think that it could really be a great thing if we can figure out, make sure we figure out all of the logistical pieces of it, but I'm really excited about it and I think it's a great, great thing.
And just to add, um, one of the most influential people in my life was my grandmother, she was a very strong woman with very strong values, and one of the things she told me when I started doing this was that, that two major constituencies, even though they may be the smallest part, that you focus in on are the children, because someday they're going to take care of you when you're in the nursing home. And then it's also the seniors, because your community is built on them. And so I think that this is an obvious start to a bigger issue that we need to focus. And we did receive a request, I can't remember her name, to give her credit, nor the name of the agency, but, um, we've been asked to take into consideration of becoming an age-friendly community. And I think that this is only one small step towards that, because it is about providing resources to that segment of the community that is very important. So, I am full supporter of this, um, including if they need an additional fifty thousand dollars to build a pavilion. There's some things you just, you have to bite your tongue and just do it, so.
Yeah.
With that, if there's no other comments, I'd like to remove the question. All in favor? Ananomous, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to order number seventeen dash oh ninety-nine. Act on the request to set the date, time, and location of the municipal elections for Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen. To appoint the warden, set the hours for voter registration, and act on appointments of election ballot clerks pursuant to chapter two hundred, article seven, nomination and elections, and authorize the town clerk to make any additional appointments as necessary as recommended by the clerk. Is there any comment from the public? Not seeing any, just as a high level before, well, yeah, before we take. So this is available at the town clerk's office, obviously, because it's a very lengthy document, so I'm not going to read the entire document, but I do think it's important, trying to find the language above the dates and times. So, um, I did want to make it clear for the public that the polls will be opened on that day, on November seventh, at seven AM and closed at eight PM. Assentee ballots will be processed on Monday, November sixth, two thousand and seventeen, from nine AM to four PM. And on Election Day, Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, starting at eight AM, ten AM, one PM, four PM, and seven thirty PM until done. The registrar of voters will hold office hours during regular business hours at the town hall and at the polls to correct any errors or changes, or change a name or address on the voting list to accept the registration of any person eligible to vote and to accept new enrollments. And did want to mention that the location of the election will be at the Scarborough High School Alumni Gymnasium. So, with that, it's all within the context of the document, as well as the names of all of the election workers. With that, if there is a motion.
To move.
Any questions for the clerk or for council? Not seeing any, I'm moving the question, all in favor. Ananomous, thank you. Um, there are no non-action items, standing and special committee reports and liaison reports, I'll start with Councilor Sinclair.
Oh, thank you. All right, sorry. Um, I had, I don't think I've given a communications update, but we talked a lot about it tonight, so most of you know what we have, um, coming up on our agenda. Um, we're going to obviously try to schedule that, um, that meeting, co-meeting with the school board communications group. I'm also going to ask that it be videotaped and televised. Usually communications isn't, for some reason, just, I think because it's our first year, maybe. But I am going to ask for that to be videoed so that people can go back and see it, because I think it's going to be one that people should have access to. And that's it for me, for now.
Thank you. Councilor Foley?
Um, conservation commission did not meet, because we all attended the all boards meeting last week. And, but I did want to mention that the Eastern Trail Alliance had a very successful two thousand and seventeen main lighthouse ride. Um, it's one of their biggest fundraisers and ways in which they raise money for the Eastern Trail Alliance, so that was done very well, that's it.
What, uh, Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, a couple things, a couple things to report on. Coastal Harbor and Shellfish met, the Coastal Harbor, Coastal Waters and Harbor Commission are looking at, again, they're kind of debriefing after the summer, parking still remains kind of a challenge down around the co-ops, and they're still kind of struggling through that and trying to figure out things that they can do to help have access for both the public and, and the commercial fisheries. They're also now struggling with, there's, there's a long waiting list for moorings, and they're finding that the mooring list may not be up, up to date. There's some, some folks that have multiple moorings, so they're trying to weed through sort of a mooring. That's, that's coastal. Shellfish, um, is kind of, they're, they're kind of, I don't know how to put this delicately, um, there's some leadership issues and some other things, but for right now, the Shellfish is, they're kind of, as they start to close in on the issue of licenses again, that always becomes a very, um, a passionate issue for a lot of them, and we're starting that process as we are now, so they, they started those conversations. Then I'll report on finance committees, actually, the finance committees have been busy, we did have a joint finance committee Monday night, and I've already kind of reported out that that really was getting together with Board of Education Finance Committee and ours, and we kind of talked about what went, what went well with the budget, what didn't, kind of brainstormed about things we wanted to do. We also talked about maybe trying to think about how we could do forecasting, and again, that was a, was a lengthy conversation, but a good conversation, I think we'll make some forward progress on that. And then there were some things that we didn't get to and realized that there's a lot of value, and I think Councilor Kiazlo kind of made reference to it, I think we recognize that we thought we'd worked well together this year as a team and really want to kind of continue that effort, and have decided instead, in the past, we've kind of adjourned and not reconvene until mid-budget season, but we're going to continue to meet regularly and really try to, to start getting a leg up on next year's budget season. So that was sort of the joint finance. We did have a town council finance committee meeting, and there's some things on origin, and I passed out to you tonight as council members, two pretty busy schedules, and the first one I'd like to have you maybe just take a look at is Town and School Fund Balance. It really kind of gives you an update of where we think we ended up or where we did end up, uh, from an audit perspective in two thousand and sixteen. And to walk, the takeaway from that is we ended up with about six point one million in unassigned reserves. Our goal was to get to eight point three-three percent of our operating budget, where that was at seven point seven-two. We put, we didn't raise our goal, and we're moving toward that. But what I wanted, wanted to draw your attention to at the very bottom of the page when it says Town Fund Balance. This is on audited numbers as of year-end, June thirtieth, seventeen. The good news is, though, actually, the town had about a six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar surplus, which is great news. We asked a little bit about what contributed to that, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, we thought it was really excise taxes.
Majority.
Continue to be positive. You did put in some curtailment on expenses toward the tail end of the year that may have had an impact or not, we weren't quite sure. But that sets us up nicely, or at least is a little bit more of a cushion in the reserves as we go into next year. That also tells you, again, our goal was to get to eight point three-three percent of reserves of our operating budget. That puts us at eight point one-six, so again, we, we made steady progress from the prior year. So, there's a lot of information here, if anybody has any questions, feel free to, you know, connect with any of us in the finance committee, we can walk you through it. The second document I've handed out, it's this really colorful document, and we have , for us, a kind of thank for, for this, we've put a lot of work into this. And actually, what it, what we have done, and we really wanted to get your input, not necessarily tonight, but just again, let us know as you look at this, what we tried to do is come up with some, just sort of a dashboard, some metrics that we thought were important that every year we may want to take a look at and see what we're doing. So what you see here is, in the middle, you have, you know, let's just take debt service as a percent of annual revenue. In fifteen, it was twelve point two-two percent. In sixteen, it was eleven point two percent. So the green arrow says that that's going down, which is, which is a direction where we've wanted to go. Um, the colorful numbers on the left-hand side, this is kind of a work in progress, we need to kind of figure out how to display this, but those are some benchmarks. So it really says, if it was fifteen or over, that would really be in sort of a danger zone. If it's around twelve, that's okay, if it's under twelve, that's actually a good place. So you can see the green arrow starts to suggest we're moving in the right direction. So that's kind of mirrored up and down these other metrics that we've, we've determined. Our thought here is that, and again, some of these things are blank, we haven't quite figured out the best benchmarks to use. So what you see on the acceptable range, there's still a work in progress for us to determine what we're going to do. This is meant to be as a starting point, just kind of a toe in the sand, our thought is that around the same time we get our audited financial statements, that we as a town council could take a look at this metric and just say, how are we doing? It's really meant to be a performance metric, are we headed in the right direction or not? We've had a lot of spirited conversations about what are the right metrics to use, and these aren't set in stones, we're, we're still, we're looking at that. And that brings up the second subject, as part of that, we are trying to rewrite or review the debt and, you know, fiscal management policies. A lot of these metrics are embedded in that policy, so we're not sure it was the right metric, so that's kind of a work in progress for us. And I, you know, we, so we talked, I talked about year-end financial, we talked about the metrics. We did, I did share it, but you, if you go out to our agenda item, we also started to model what our debt service looks like, our principal and debt service, how in time we folded into those numbers. Our capital facilities plan that we come up, came up with, so we've folded in what the pub, if the public safety building passes, what does that do? So it's just an interesting model, if you guys want to go out and take a look at it. And our next meeting will be on the seventeenth, so I think the seventeenth of October, where we'll continue some of this work. So I think that's my piece, if anybody has any questions for these documents or any thoughts or suggestions, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rowan?
Thank you. So Scarborough Housing Alliance met. We were discussing the recommendations that we're obligated to bring back to this body regarding use of the fund, the, the balance of the housing funds. Specifically, that was part of stipulation of the, um, the gateway property on, on August, when we, when we changed that contract zone, it was, we had, um, obligated the Scarborough Housing Alliance to come back with how we might use those funds to, to generate, um, more affordable housing in town. And, uh, we are meeting one more time before our next meeting, and there'll be a recommendation from the chair at our, at our following meeting. That's been well. Senior, excuse me, the fifty-five-plus program advisory committee met, Mr. Susan was there again, and, but we were talking about the membership structure. There's some debate over the best way to encourage participation, to cover costs of, at the different events versus charging on trips to, to fund that program. There's some concern that, you know, hey, the seniors are the only group in town that have to pay a membership fee, but on the other hand, they're also the only group in town that have coffee and snacks at, at their weekly events. So there's some, some debate about the, the right way to structure that moving forward, and there, there are more, more discussion to come.
Councilor Kiazlo?
So I'm going to yield to, to Councilor Hayes real quick, just to, sorry.
And, and the senior moment. When we were talking about the metrics, we talked about the, the town metrics that we're choosing, both in our joint finance committee meeting with Board of Education, they also have some outcome metrics that they have chosen in a prior year that they're going to kind of similarly put in some type of dashboard that we can take a look at, too. They're, they're kind of in the process of pulling those out and let us know what they are, but that, that'll be our intent to kind of incorporate them. Thank you.
Yep. So, uh, transportation hasn't meet, met, excuse me, they're meeting next week. Long-range planning, met, and unfortunately, I, I'm hitting the travel time, so I keep missing those, those meetings, so I apologize to them and to the council for not being able to detail those meetings. But the most important thing next week is Planapalooza. So, there's a lovely graphic to the left, I don't know if the camera can zoom in on that. That would, it'd be nice if that was up during my comments, so people could follow along. But Planapalooza is a, is a public design and input process during which the community and the town's planning team work jointly to draft a new comprehensive plan for Scarborough. The comprehensive plan will guide future decisions for conservation and growth in Scarborough. During the Planapalooza, conservations, conversations will occur surrounding land use, transportation, natural resources, parks and open spaces, bikeways, trails, public facilities, and services, economic development, as well as community growth development, design housing, and ident, and identify, um, and identity, excuse me. So, lots and lots and lots of stuff. Next week's the big, the big kickoff, the big push, hoping we get a really decent turnout. The workshop, opening workshop is Monday at six-thirty PM at Scarborough High School. Then on Tuesday, there are technical meetings scheduled throughout the day at the space above the Scarborough grounds on Route One. At nine AM, there'll be sustainability, at ten-thirty, natural environment and resiliency, two-thirty, the economy and jobs, four PM, mobility and health, and five-thirty, built environment and design. And then there will be a closing presentation on Thursday, the twenty-eighth, at six-thirty PM. Tuesday isn't the only opportunity, Wednesday is kind of an open session, so if you missed anything, and if you're not available, I know these are during the day, it's difficult for necessarily everybody to meet those times. There's, they will be available above, at the same location above Scarborough grounds from nine AM to nine PM on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then nine AM to noon on Thursday. So ample opportunity for everybody and anybody to stop by, put their two cents in, and, and get an idea of how we're developing a comprehensive plan and participate, so. And if you have any questions, or if more information needed, there's a separate website dedicated just for this process, it's www.scarboroughengaged.org. And that's dedicate, you can link it through our town website, there's a little box in the lower-left corner, or you can go directly to that, and that'll have all kinds of information and interactive surveys and a place for information exchanges as well during the entire process. So.
Thank you. Councilor Donovan?
Uh, playing board action, the only thing really material was the rezoning of Vegas Parkway that was endorsed. Public hearing before us tonight. Ordinance committee, we're going to move up the meeting schedule for the first week of October up to, uh, September twenty-eighth, really with the intention of trying to move meetings up, because we still have business to conduct, and we want to get everything done before the end of the town council year in November. Attended the all-board summit, uh, and we worked on the comprehensive plan. The energy committee met this morning, seven-thirty. The food waste diversion pilot program, uh, has been concluded, clearly raised the consciousness and interest in composting. We're seeing that in a tremendous return of surveys, unbelievable number of surveys out of the people who were involved. The Pleasant Hill drop-off site, we're having to expand the number of barrels that Garbage to Garden is putting down there because of its popularity. We also covered the, uh, energy plan for the comprehensive plan, and that'll be coming to us through the comprehensive plan process. But the energy committee has been working diligently on this for, that for months. The LED streetlight conversion project, RFP, has been. The LED streetlight conversion project, RFP, has been issued. We're going to select the contractor and consultants in the weeks ahead, really following right on the heels of Falmouth and Portland. Installation will be the late spring of next year. And that's it for committees.
Thank you.
Two items, or a couple of items for me as chair. Did want to mention that last week, I did send out a notification to the council, but I wanted to make a public notification that the, as chair of the ad hoc elections committee, Mr. Freeman and I did make the two appointments. Those two appointments were Jim Elkins of Scarborough as well as Anthony DeSoto. Some of you may know Mr. Elkins, he serves on our long-range planning committee. He also serves as our delegate to the Portland Regional Chamber and serves on the executive committee and has been in town for many years. And Mr. DeSoto has also been in town for, I want to say about 10 years. And his background is that he recently was a graduate of Leadership Maine in which his capstone focused on municipal services, mostly in the northern Maine area with one particular town. So for both of us, we thought it was a really nice complement to the process. We did have our first meeting this past week. We have another one coming up and we expect to, you know, report out in an executive summary document what transpired in the conversations that we had. So I'll report on that later. Did want to make notice that because of commitments, not only as the current chair, but just in work, I have resigned or will be resigning from the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee in which I was elected. I simply cannot travel, the travel requirements have to Augusta for the meetings. So there will be a future agenda item. I'm going to ask the council to appoint the assistant manager, Larissa Crockett, who is already our delegate as the actual, she is the assistant or alternate delegate, and appoint her as the actual delegate, which will provide some stability in that position and then council take up the assistant or the alternate position later on, maybe in the new council, because it's not really that critical at this time. Also wanted to mention that I have left and not able to serve this year on the county budget finance committee. Last year, I've served on for many years, but last year I served as finance, as the chair. They are looking for people who might be interested. It is a very interesting insight into county government and the reliance on that and so serving on that finance committee is an elected position, I should say appointed because it's appointed by the commissioners. So if there is an interest from any councilor here, it's a great experience. I just can't serve in the capacity based on work schedule. So come and see me or talk to me and I'll be happy to introduce you to our county commissioner, Neil Jamison. And did also want to mention that Sedco has their annual meeting coming up on October 3rd, which is always a wonderful time in which we recognize our business community as well as get to hear how the community has progressed with its business, new businesses and current business profile. With that, moving on to the town managers' report.
Yes, a few quick items. Counselor Rowan, just to jog my memory, very interested to report, pleased to report that Gateway Commons, the apartment complex on Haggis Parkway, had a construction meeting here today. As I suspected, they are very anxious to get going and I think they're going to build at a pace much quicker than they had originally planned. They're really trying to meet that market where it is today. So that's certainly good encouraging news that that project is moving ahead and you should see a flurry of activity in the next 10 days or so. As part of the comprehensive plan process, one of the things that I'm really interested in is it's really a return on investment analysis. It's going to be a tool that we'll have available to us that will help us understand and it's a very highly developed model that has several hundred inputs and these inputs, the consultants were here for a day and a half, getting kind of the local calibration. So really kind of fine tuning those inputs to make sure they make sense for us. But essentially, you'll be able to plug in different land use types on land and understand return on that investment in terms of tax revenue, impact analysis. So I think you'll be interested, given the fact that this council sat through kind of a similar discussion, this tool's going to be available to us going forward as well. So that'll be very interesting to see how that develops. Also, for the public's benefit, Avenue 2 is, made its way through the parties at this point and things look favorable, such that I believe the matter will come back before council at your October 4th meeting. That's what we're shooting for at this point. There seemed to be a genuine interest to move this as soon as possible, particularly in front of this council, since you're familiar with the issues and the parties. I've talked to Chairman Baybine. It seems appropriate to perhaps have a workshop, maybe it doesn't need to be a full hour, but the intent of that would be to kind of provide you an update of what's changed since you've seen this last and then potentially have action on that same evening for the council to do its part to approve the discontinuance and the related legal documents. So very pleased that that seems to be coming to fruition. Also, a bit housekeeping, but maybe services. One of the things that they do, it's many, many things, but one of the things that's, I think, well-received by the community is passport service. That's become so popular and for any of you that have been up to that office, it's just a short counter space and many times passport processing, particularly for a full family, can take a lengthy period of time. So we're trying to get our, to manage that a bit better and we're going to do it by appointment only. We've done some notices out to the public and so far, things have been accepted well. We have a fairly liberal allowance there, but that will just give us the ability to make sure we're properly staffed. And then we'll do one or two or three Saturdays throughout the course of the year. I think last year, we did over 100 passports on that one Saturday. So it's a service that's, I think, well-needed and well-deserved and well-appreciated. And lastly, you'll be pleased to know, we did receive a dividend check from the Maine Municipal Association's risk pool and the total dividend this year is $31,035 and that's made up of about $20,000 for workers' comp and the remainder from our property casualties. So that certainly suggests that our performance, we're outperforming the expectations and as a member community, get to enjoy that savings by way of the dividend.
Good.
Thank you.
Counselor member comments, I'll start with Counselor Chazza.
Nothing this week. It's been a crazy week. So I'm just appreciative of all the work we're doing and budget season's starting already again for the next year, so looking forward to just continuing the work.
Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, no, similarly.
Thanks. Same player?
Could I ask you another quick question?
I said no. You still do it, wouldn't you?
No.
Of course you can.
I'll just leave.
Oh, you speak up and everybody can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Do you remember, I believe it's September and maybe someone, maybe other people will remember, but we're supposed to get a report back from the Affordable Housing Group. Do you, is that being prepared? Is that due in September?
October 1st is the due date.
It was, okay.
And we're planning to, the chair of the committee is planning to come before the council at our next meeting.
Oh, okay, great. So for, not for the whole presentation, but just to give us an update?
To give an update and kind of what the latest and greatest thinking from that committee.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't, I wanted to keep that, keep sight of that. I wanted to, I thought I had something else. I don't usually do counselor comments, but I think that's it for me.
Counselor Foley?
Planapalooza, next week. Go check it out. Yep, that's it.
Counselor Rowan?
Nothing, thank you.
Counselor Donovan?
Yeah, the Metro Regional Coalition met as part of GP Cog. It was the points of interest for us, I won't cover too much of it. Cape Elizabeth Town Council banned all marijuana sales and shop two weeks ago. City of Portland is under some considerable pressure to advance all of the aspects. I'll say no more on that. Attended the Public Safety Building Workshop, the public outreach meeting yesterday at Pleasant Hill. I must say, the chiefs, you'd be impressed by how well the chiefs do in presenting this and it's, it's a terrific proposal. People should get to know what's going on because the degree of increased utilization of the facility and the deteriorating condition of what we have there absolutely justifies this project and the efficiencies that are being built into it. Oh, longtime Higgins Beach resident, Anna Peats. Best wishes to her on her 100th birthday this Sunday.
Ah.
And as sweet a lady as you'll ever meet. And that's it.
I'm sorry. I apologize to the council, but I don't know if you all remember, I think it was presented to the whole council, it may have just been ordinance, but we had a woman come forward that was complaining about a scent. It was a scent issue. And was it just the ordinance or did she make a statement to the whole council?
Yeah.
It was. It wasn't email, but she did also come to a meeting. And Counselor Foley and I were driving to council tonight and she had made a complaint about the smell of marijuana, very strong smell of marijuana, and this is harvesting time. Didn't realize that, but learn something new every day. And when she came in, you know, she was pretty upset and, you know, you hear it, but we drove down tonight and I would say a mile and a half to two miles? Is that an exaggeration?
A little.
Little bit. Little bit. It felt like it.
But it stayed, it was pervasive.
It was, yeah. It stayed, if you had, we had the windows down like maybe like this much, the smell was overwhelming and we were like passing through. So I can't imagine if, I mean, I'm not sure I want my kids even, I mean, obviously you can't, well, I don't know. I don't know what happens when, maybe that's why I feel so perky tonight, but.
You are awful talking at times.
I know. Normally I don't talk this much. Maybe we stayed on that road a little too long tonight, but maybe I do want to move to that street. Anyway, the point being, I guess my point, even more so than just validating what she was saying and how it's something that this council really needs to be aware of when we're talking about what we want to allow and not allow, is that, it's how imperative it is for us to make sure that when we do get a complaint like that and it's before us, that we do go and check stuff out and that we do go and make sure that we're really looking into things. I mean, this is a really large town and I think that until you're running a campaign or working in this, or working in the town, or you're a real estate agent, or any of those things that really get you out, you don't realize that we're over 20,000 people and we cover a very large area. And so it's very easy for us, most towns this size don't have this form of government and/or their, or their counselors are broken off into regions or sections, divisions. Wards. But we cover everything. So it was just really struck me tonight about personally, I need to do a much better job of making sure that when I get a complaint like that, that I actually go and do the research behind it. Because we do get a lot of them, especially when you're on ordinance, we get a lot of like, you know, one or two things here and it's really important that we really get out there and I personally just want to make sure that I'm doing that more. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up.
Thank you. Just a couple of items to be quick. First is, I think it's funny because actually I'm starting to focus more, so I'm actually celebrating a milestone this week and a birthday and I got my AARP card invitation. So I hope that's not an indication of why I voted for the senior project, but it's kind of interesting when you, kind of things that hit you in life and you're like, wow.
I got one and I'm younger than you, so.
I know, I know. The second piece of that, wanted to mention about a comment that was made, a comment that was made earlier tonight in public comments. And I'm going to be specific, even though we typically do not mention names, I'm going to be specific to the name because he's also a claimant in the lawsuit against the town. So I think it's appropriate to bring this up because I think the public needs to be aware of the lawsuit. So Mr. Doyle, Michael Doyle, who is from Falmouth, continues to come to our council and makes comments and I really want to thank the citizens for being tolerant because I see the eyes that roll when he speaks. I hear comments, I get feedback from citizens who watch at home and they wonder why we let that happen or at least why he's allowed to make the comments. And I, two things to kind of understand. One is I find that by not responding, which is not necessarily not listening, it simply makes it a lot easier because it doesn't fuel the process or fuel the situation. So while I know our council's rules say that we're not supposed to be personal, I simply allow him to go to a particular point so that we can just move on as a community because the fact is that his comments are not important to this community, but unfortunately, we have to allow that, his opportunity for free speech. The reason why I'm mentioning him by name is because we do have pending lawsuits in which one was recently settled that the citizens should know about because he did mention this previously. I think it's ironic that he doesn't mention that it was settled, but the actual settlement was that the judge actually ruled in favor of Scarborough, in which we did not have to release the emails in which he continuously references. And not only did she rule in favor of us, she also fined him in a little excess of about $1,500. And my understanding, wrote a personal note, and keep in mind is that most judges have clerks that write very formal documents, wrote a personal note and the reason for the fine was for the frivolous lawsuit that he continues to file against the town. So I hope that you know that at least one of those, there are a couple more pending, but I think that the citizens need to understand why we kind of tolerate and are thicker-skinned in allowing this to happen, but they should have, they should also know that at least one of those cases has been resolved in our favor as we expected. And with that, I'm going to leave with the other item that I was going to bring up because I don't want to be the longest person to talk. So with that, I'll take most intuitive journey.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor. Thank you. Have a good night.
That's rude. Who are we, on this trip? Nice, classic. You realize that because of this.